This time, I'd like to call to order the July 1st, 2014 City Council Meeting for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma. If you would rise with me for the invocation by Pastor Thomas Buckley from Judah Worship Center and the Flexily.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you so much for all your incredible freedoms that you have given us. Father, we thank you for continuing to bless us and our community. God, we thank you for our credible council members. Please give us wisdom tonight as we do about your business. We give you the glory and the honor and the praise in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
This is our time for presentations and proclamations.
None this evening, Mr. Mayor.
None this evening. We have arrived at our visitor's section on the agenda. Any Yukon citizens that would like to address a council on a non-agended item, this is your time to come forward to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, I'd just like to give a reminder that at our last council meeting, we have passed a resolution that will require our citizens to fill a form out for both the visitor's section as well as an agended item. That's an opportunity for you to speak on an agended item also. Would ask you to fill those out, present them prior to the meeting, starting to our city clerk, Mr. Shivers or myself, and then we will address that as we get there. So, Item 1A is a YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th, 2014; and B) payment of material claims in the amount of $62,109.07. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
This time, we'll adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as a Yukon City Council. City Council Agenda, Item 1 is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th, 2014; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $368,295.35; C) accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number SL-000009140451 for the construction of approximately 1,030 linear feet of 8-inch sewer line and appurtenances to serve the City of Yukon Walmart Neighborhood Market, Number 3637-00 Sewer Line Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma; Item D, accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number WL-000009140422 for the construction of approximately 390 linear feet of 6-inch and 1,310 linear feet of 8-inch water lines and appurtenances to serve the City of Yukon Walmart Neighborhood Market, Number 3637-00 Sewer Line Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma; E, the appointment of Leon Nelson to the Board of the Spanish Cove Housing Authority for a six-year in-office, Number 3, as recommended by the nominating committee; F, an inter-local governmental cooperation agreement with the City of Piedmont, providing use of the Yukon Jail for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, for a rate of $42 per day, per prisoner, no change from 2013; Item G, the renewal of the existing inter-local governmental cooperation agreement with Canadian County Sheriff's Office, deputizing Yukon Police Officers for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, as approved by the State Attorney General; Item H, the renewal of the existing inter-local governmental cooperation agreement with the Canadian County Sheriff's Office, providing use of the county jail for the term of July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015, at a rate of $40 per day, per prisoner, no change from 2013; Item I, the inter-local governmental cooperation agreement with the City of Bethany, providing use of the Yukon Jail for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, for a rate of $42 per day, per prisoner, no change from 2013; Item J, an inter-local governmental cooperation agreement with the City of El Reno, provides use of the Yukon Jail for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, for a rate of $42 per day, per prisoner, no change from 2013; K, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for July 15th, 2014, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 2 is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving Resolution Number 2014-11, a resolution of the City of Yukon, Yukon City Council establishing the 911 Emergency Telephone Service Fee for the calendar year 2014, maintaining the landline service fees at their current rates. Do we have a motion?
Somebody?
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 4, consider approving Ordinance Number 1299, an ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma pertaining to the definition of employee providing for repealer and severability and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
That's a motion.
Thank you. And we have a second, Mr. Alberts?
I, second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bottom, can you, as far as current employees and future employees, can you explain for us how this ordinance would affect the current and then a future employee?
Current employees will stay under the defined benefit plan. We know it as a pension. Future employees, everybody hired after June 30th, 2014, would then be under the defined contribution plan. You can relate a defined contribution plan as much akin to a 401K plan. So, this means that all current employees continue on the same retirement system that they have had since their employment began and as long as they choose to be a part of the city and a part of this retirement system. The new employees will simply be under a different type of retirement plan, beginning, hopefully tomorrow.
Go ahead. I had some questions on that. I understood the date and when and everything, but there was something you mentioned about an annuity in there going to the possibility of looking at...
That is simply a possibility. We are still a year, maybe 18 months or so, out from having that as a provision.
So, that's still a long... And would that be an option, then?
Yes, it would be. Chris? Chris Watley with OMRF, the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me out. OMRF is currently evaluating the possibility of doing that. We are hearing more and more from our cities that offer defined contribution-type plans that they want to have an annuity option for their participants so that whenever they get to retirement age, they can basically say, "Here's my balance. I would like to annuitize it," and then just receive a guaranteed paycheck off of that. I will tell you that we are not quite there yet, but we are actively exploring those possibilities and hope to bring something back, and that would just be a feature that you add to your plan at that time. But just as Mr. Bottom had said, that is not in place today. That is still out in the future, and we're exploring that. However, on the other hand, an employee still has the possibility that, let's say that they retired tomorrow, tomorrow was the day, and they have their balance, they can still take that balance, roll it to an IRA, and then purchase an annuity and immediately annuitize that balance so they can get a guaranteed income stream.
So, they could do it either way?
Either way, yes, sir. If they find at that point in time that it was more beneficial to work with us, we think that's great. And if they find it was more beneficial with somebody else, we think that's great.
Oh, okay. So, you're going to provide the annuity option? Is that what you're saying?
We are examining that at this point in time. It would ultimately be a goal that we would like to have. However, at this point in time, we do not have that feature available. It's just something that we're exploring, the possibility of providing in the future.
Okay. So, they'll have a choice, then, of an annuity through you or and/or someone else whenever they reach retirement age?
Yes, sir.
Assuming that's whatever it is, 65, 66?
Or whenever they terminate service. Yes, sir.
80, 100, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any further questions?
I have just a couple. And I know we've talked about this before and the information's in the pack, but I just think it's important to share. What's the long-term benefit to the city and city employees, Mr. Bottom? What's the purpose of us making this change and what do we hope to accomplish?
With the new government accounting standards that have been required beginning this month, this month, defined benefit plans are actuarially rated, best guess, and by and large, retirement plans actuarially are underfunded. Heretofore, that underfunded amount was listed on the footnotes to the financial statements and the audit for the city. But beginning today, that underfunded amount, even though it is only a guess and assumes everybody in city government is going to retire today, we have to show it on the front of the balance sheet. So, it becomes a liability of the city, even though it's a guess. By going to a defined contribution plan, which is a market-driven instrument, the amount of underfunding goes away. So, you have a plan that is self-funded, it is funded 100% and is market-driven. So, over time, and as people retire, our underfunded portion of the defined benefit plan will go away. The other portion, which is our defined contribution, will never exist.
That's correct. That's great. However, sir, if I may add to that...
Please.
You're not totally going to get out of listing some kind of an unfunded liability on your financial statements because you still participate in police pension and firefighter pension system. And so, as a city, you will be required to list on the face of your financial statements the unfunded, your share of the unfunded liability from the police and firefighter pension systems. So, while you would be replacing that with OMRF, you're totally not going to get away from that.
This only relates to general employees.
Yeah. But once again, the general essence here is that we're going to an employee-defined contribution plan rather than a retirement plan that would be paid out by the city. The city is going to pay into it as we go. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Essentially, what we're doing is pay, contributing to an IRA for each individual employee.
Well, an easier way to think of it is actually you're shifting the risk associated with the retirement plan from the city to the employee. Because currently, the city carries the risk of the investment pot of money and ultimately paying the dollars to your existing employees into the future, as Mr. Bottom says, whatever the future may be. What you're doing by going to the defined contribution plan is you're establishing that cup of money and you shift that risk away from the city to the employee. Yes, sir.
Well, I assume that what that means, then, is that the employees will have the ability to choose stock plans or what comes...
Yeah.
What do you offer in there for...
We actually, we actually have 14 different investment options for your participants to choose from, and they can range from very aggressive international stocks to money-market accounts, and then they can pick and choose between those and shift them.
So, that's very similar, then, to the federal program?
Yes.
That they have right now?
Yes.
Okay, the employees define their own...
Yes, sir.
Do the current employees have an option or do they, will they stay where they are?
They have to stay. Presently, all current employees will stay with the defined benefit plan. At some point in the future, depending on enhancements that are made to the defined contribution plan in the future at some point, it may become advantageous for the employee to freeze their defined benefit plan, stop where it is right then, and choose to go into their own 401K plan at that time. But that is out in the future somewhere.
And I would argue that while that could be a possibility, we definitely have to be very cognizant and aware of what the IRS guidelines and restrictions are.
Absolutely.
And who knows what they may change that to at that point in time, but we have to be very aware of that. I would also argue that the City of Yukon currently offers a very good defined benefit plan to their current employee group. So, I would have a hard time telling your current employees, "Go to the defined contribution plan." But that's just me talking, so... And that could be open for discussion.
And this change also, doesn't this help our credit rating or does this...
Well, it doesn't deteriorate our credit rating, I think would be a better way to say that.
The debt, didn't that negatively affect it?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is...
Borrowing rate?
Right.
Okay.
And that is our concern moving forward, and currently, your pension plan with OMRF is actually 100% funded. I actually think we're 5% over? I forget the exact number. Yeah, but we are, for all intents and purposes, 100% funded. We are very concerned that this change by GASB could affect a bond rating for the individual community if you had a project that you wanted to do and you wanted to go out and get rated bonds.
Okay.
Because you do have to carry that liability.
So, this should help our ability to borrow in the future?
Well, I cannot say that because I...
It won't negatively affect it?
It won't negatively affect it, but it's, and it's because I don't...
Because we're a bunch of lawyers.
It's because I don't control what police and fire does that I cannot say that. That's why I said...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I assume you also represent other organizations, other towns, and where do we stand in that? You know, if you're looking at us versus other towns in the funding level, is where do we stand there?
Yeah. I think it's easy to say that Yukon is actually at the top of the food chain. Now, when we look around our system as a whole, each individual city and town, and if I aggregate this, and this is not a good way to do it, but if I aggregate each city and town, we're at approximately 83% funding somewhere in that neighborhood. However, Yukon, on the other hand, we don't really aggregate. Each individual city, the experience that happens at that community solely affects that community's asset base. So, Yukon is 100% fully funded, and actually, I think it is just a little... Yeah, slightly over with OMRF, so it's not a fair representation. Also, on the other hand, looking at the defined contribution plan, again, you would still be top of the food chain. I can count on my hand, we have approximately 200 cities and towns around the state that participate in the OMRF system, and half of those have a defined benefit pension plan, half of those have a defined contribution plan. Of the half that have a defined contribution plan, I can count a handful, five, that would be offering the contribution level that Yukon is. So, you would still be very competitive on your retirement plan.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item 4 is consider approving the emergency clause of Ordinance Number 1299.
Move the emergency.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 5 is consider approving Ordinance Number 1300, an ordinance adopting an employee retirement system defined contribution plan for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing for purpose and organization, providing for definitions, providing for eligibility and participation, providing for employer and employee contributions, providing for accounting, allocation, and valuation, providing benefits, providing for required notice, providing for amendments and termination, providing for transfer to and from other plans, creating committee and providing for powers, duties and rights of committee, providing for payment of certain obligations, providing for payment and duration of expenses, providing for effective date, providing for vesting schedules, providing for a fund to finance a system to be pooled with other incorporated cities, towns, and their agencies, and instrumentalities, there we go, for purpose of administration, management, and investment as part of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, providing for payment of all contributions under the system to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund for management and investment, providing for non-alienation of benefits and loss of benefits for cause, adopting those amendments mandated by the Internal Revenue Code, providing for employer pickup of required contributions, providing for repealer and severability and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Well, just one. Grayson, who's going to administer all of this? Is this done through your HR group?
Yes, as part of our benefits plan, and they work very closely with OMRF. So, you'll be seeing changes in that area, but that's where it goes through, and it's part of the payroll system, really, Chris.
Yeah. There would be actually a combination of things, sir. The enrollment of people would still be done by your HR folks. The payroll is going to be very similar to what it is right now. The big difference is going to be, I will be working much more closely with Mrs. Shivers, coming out and talking with your employees and trying to provide them education on what their options are so that they know how they're investing their money and things like that. So, I'll be, your folks will be seeing me quite a bit more often. And I live very close, so it's easy for me to come.
Well, I noticed this is a pretty big mouthful...
Yes, sir.
...of items and everything else that I guess I... Cindy, are you really ready for this? How much of a change is this from where we currently are right now? It's not significant. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
5A, consider approving the emergency clause of Ordinance Number 1300.
Somebody?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 6, consider approving the application for a hazard mitigation grant in the amount of $20,261 with a 25% local share of $5,065.25 for an emergency generator to be installed at Fire Station Number 2 as recommended by the Emergency Management Director. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 7 is consider the approval of a request for the proposal packet for a selection of a contractor to assist the City of Yukon with abatement of trash, grass, and weeds code violations. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Have the, have the citation dollar values been set on this yet, or is that something yet to do?
This is not citation language. This is concerning hiring a contractor to help our public work staff with the abatement of nuisances, primarily as it relates to trash, grass, and weeds in private individuals' yards. So, this, there could be citations. Those have been set by ordinance some time ago, and...
Well, my question is on this, though, if we abate the property, then we bill the person or the property or we file...
The actual process is that we send them a bill for the cost of the abatement. We send them a second bill in 30 days. At the end of that time, we then file a lien with the county court, district court, clerk, and for the lien services, if the property is ever sold or any monies are collected by the court, then we get our money at that point.
Okay. Have that, is there some idea of the cost? When I read through the process, I didn't see any numbers in there.
Each one's different depending on the service that they perform.
Exactly.
Well, okay. But there's no idea about the overall...
I mean, it could be $100, it could be $500.
Yeah, I guess they could be...
350 is a good round number.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 8 is city manager's report. These are information items only.
Very quickly, I want to invite everybody to come out this weekend and help celebrate 4th of July. On Thursday evening, we will have the Veterans Celebration, where we will feed all the Yukon veterans and have music by Irv Wagner and his band. Should be quite an event. It always is fun. That's on Thursday evening. Also, then Friday, it's events all day, beginning at 8:00 AM. The Cherry Bomb Triathlon all day, which is a great time to go watch kids run and play, lots of fun. The car show, the music, the barbecue cook-off, it, everything going on, and then finished up in the evening with the Oklahoma City Philharmonic playing at the gazebo, followed by fireworks again on Friday night. It's a great event. Weather is supposed to cooperate, be very nice. We anticipate a large crowd, both in the park and around the park. You and probably 35,000 or 40,000 other people can come, enjoy the fireworks in the park, and we hope that you will do so. Also, want to remind you about the continuing Thursday night concerts in the park, along with three more movies. Please watch the paper, our city website, for all the times and exactly what's going to be going on there. I do want to point out also that with the holiday falling on a Friday, that the Yukon City offices will be closed all day on Friday. Residential sanitation routes will be affected. Customers whose routine trash pickup day is Friday will be picked up instead on Monday, July the 7th. The transfer station and the recycle center will also be closed on Friday. So, with that, I stand ready for your questions.
Does the council have any questions for city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 9. That's new business. Item 10 is council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Well, I'd certainly like to thank the Spanish Cove folks for stopping by today, and certainly I applaud their choice of Mr. Leon Nelson. I read the little blurb on you and everything, and we're very glad to see the Cove folks have such a really good bunch of folks running the, running the place. And I'm a little envious in the fact they have their own private deck for watching the the fireworks out back, but, uh, I think that's pretty nice. Other thing is, is that I'm, I'm really grateful that our city does a good job with our retirement plans for the employees when they do finally retire and don't wind up with some of these folks that have to decide whether or not they're gonna turn on their electricity or they're gonna turn on their air conditioner or buy their drugs. I mean, I, I, I know how important it is. I just retired myself a short time ago, and I think for us to be in that position where we are properly funding it and not looking at other retirement plans that are in, in, in trouble across the country. So, uh, with that, uh, Mayor, that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Yes, I just, um, hope to see everybody out at the Fourth of July celebration and looking forward to it.
Very good. Mr. Alberts?
Couple of things, uh, with our evolving about how we, uh, handle the meetings and guests, does, does someone come out ahead of time and address the guests and say, if you're here this evening and you wanna address the council, there's a form back here, we might, does someone do that before the meeting?
We have not done that, but we're still brand-new in the process.
Yeah, I would, I would say, I would say, Mr. Alberts, that, um, I typically am out ten minutes or so before the meeting starts and I'll, I'll be, for the first few meetings at least, making those aware that the forms are there.
Just 'cause I don't think people would know, a lot of people.
I, I agree, and that's why we're gonna, even though we passed it last meeting, we'll, we'll ease into it to make sure that they, uh, acclimate.
You know me, I'd hate for someone to miss out on the opportunity to talk, so anyway. Uh, as far as the Fourth of July, I wanna thank the veterans and, uh, for their dedication and service to our country, our community, et cetera. Thank you very much, and also invite you to come on, uh, Thursday night and, and, and have, uh, some food and entertainment. Uh, that's any veteran that lives here in our community in the city limits, they're all invited, and, and please come and attend. Uh, let's see, I had one more thing.
Your glasses are right there, Tom.
They're there. I can't read my own handwriting. That's it. Thank you.
Happy Fourth.
Ms. Yanda?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Nelson on his appointment to the Spanish Cove Housing Authority, and I look forward to serving with you. Um, it'll, it's a great board to be on and, uh, I think I, from what I've heard and read that you'll bring a lot of great ideas to the Cove and we look forward to it. And I, I wanna wish everyone a happy Fourth and a safe holiday.
So? Thank you.
Oh, I, I know what it is.
Sure.
This is important, since I live near the park. I, I wanted to thank the people that live around the park that during the time, during the Christmas lights and also during the Fourth of July, their patience with the congested traffic. Because living near there, and, and can you do too, it's pretty hectic and congested, but it's, it's a meaningful event for the community. So I wanted to say thank you for your patience and also to remind people to be patient and cordial, it's a celebration, and if you think that, uh, you need to leave about ten o'clock or eleven o'clock on Thursday and Friday night, you might leave a little early because it might take you a little longer. So, thank you to the community for helping to be involved in that celebration.
All right, thank you. Um, I too would like to congratulate Mr. Nelson. I was proud and honored to be, uh, part of that selection process, and I have no doubt that you're gonna be an asset, uh, to Spanish Cove. No, no doubt. Um, I'd also, uh, I'd also like to say that I think anybody that knows Mayor has, uh, followed my career, my public service career in Yukon would agree that I've been an advocate for business and I have been an advocate for our, uh, Chamber of Commerce, not just while on the council, but, uh, for many years prior, even having served on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. Um, so that being said, I believe that, uh, businesses within our market should be welcome with a membership to our chamber. Um, I also would like to say that it's fairly and, and growing more common knowledge that there are some, um, Yukon business owners that have concerns right now. And, um, I've, I've been fielding many contacts through, uh, calls and emails and, uh, Facebook messages and so on. Um, so when I got home this weekend and I opened my, uh, Yukon Review, um, I was delighted to see an article on the front page that the, the headline was Chamber looks for inclusion. And, uh, I think that's, uh, that is critical for us to advance in our, our market. Uh, but as I read on, I came to a quote that says, "I hear people say that they hate to leave Yukon for a community coffee." She said, "I ask, are you afraid to leave city limits?" And when I read that, I thought that, that was, were, were local business owners really belittled right there? Um, I don't think that, um, condescending remarks are conducive to being inclusive. So if that's truly our goal, then I think we need to be cautious about how we represent ourselves. As, uh, as I read on in the article, I read into another quote that says, "We," and this is in quotations, "we've been criticized for bullying members with political candidates." Um, I actually have firsthand knowledge of the accuracy of that statement because it was taken from a Facebook post that I wrote. And my Facebook post actually reads, uh, let's see, da-da-da-da, and, in quotes, "And now the administration is trying to bully its members to benefit candidates?" Question mark. I'm not comfortable with what I am hearing. I wrote that post after being contacted by a local business owner and chamber member that was visited by a, uh, leader of our chamber, not, not one of the chamber board's directors, I might say, and was, the purpose of the visit was to deter them from allowing an event to occur at their business that conflicted with our community coffee. It was at a different location at the same time. Um, and during that visit, um, it was brought to this business owner's attention that there were gonna be many candidates at the, uh, chamber coffee, the community coffee, and that that's where the chamber members should be. So the bullying, uh, it's not using the candidates, bullying members with candidates, it was bullying members to benefit candidates. There's a significant difference there. I have talked to five different, uh, members of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, all of which have expressed a willingness to talk to any chamber members that have concerns, which would be expected. So as opposed to, uh, the grumbling that's going on behind the scenes, if, as a business owner, a chamber member, you have a concern, I'm gonna recommend strongly that you contact, if you're uncomfortable contract, contacting the CEO, then contact a member of the Board of Directors and let them know what your thoughts are. I mean, if you have a problem, whether it's real or perceived, and you feel it needs to be addressed, there's a certain way to go about it. And grumbling behind others' backs and making condescending quotes in the newspaper is not the way to get it solved. Our chamber is an asset to this community, and we're going through some huge developments in the very near future, and we need to have a unified business community. And if there's anything that I can do to further that along, as I have in the past, I will continue to do so. But again, I think we need to, uh, we need to behave as adults.
Mayor, can I comment?
Actually, not at this time.
Okay.
At this time, we will adjourn this meeting.